We'll act for a moment of silent meditation, pledge to the flag. Please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, it's October 16th, 10 o'clock. All three county commissioners are here, and I now call the meeting to order, and we will now have consents and approvals. Good morning.
Good morning. We have three exoneration's for 1,000, oh, I'm sorry, 172,160 dollars and 16 cents. Two requests to create statements for 170,75189. We have minutes for October 9th, 2019. Vouchers, General County Fund, 255, 48658. Coal Severance, 5,0794. Chestnut Ridge Park, 5,8274. Camp Muffley, 3,83316. Transportation Levy, 293,97345. Fire Levy, 37951347. Recreation Levy, 35659828. Library Levy, 27666907. Assessors Valuation, 1,041731. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, 524,950 dollars and 32 cents. Purchasing Card Vouchers, General County Fund, $10,000, sorry, $10,050.39. Coal Severance, 4319. Chestnut Ridge Park, 41060. Mason Dixon Park, 5427. For a voucher total of 2,114,62183. Assistant vacancies for Boarding Authorities, the Western Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, Montague County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, the Mon County Abandoned and Delapidated Enforcement Agency, and the Clay-Battel PSD. Fiduciary orders for October 16th, 2019, and then there are two other items that you will need to do separately.
Move for approval?
Second.
Pop and move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now let's talk about the two items.
Okay. You have an objection to the final settlement in the estate of Bradley Richard Crowe.
I move that we refer that to fiduciary commissioner.
Second.
Pop and move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You also have a final status report for fiduciary commissioner Beth LaBeau.
We approve?
I'll second.
It was in the folder.
It's not a final.
Uh...
It's a quarterly status report?
It's, I think it says final on it.
Okay, here we go.
It's got the folder. The yellow one. The yellow folder? This is final.
I think that that's a misprint. It's a quarterly status report for her and Ryan, you mean?
So we want to modify it to a quarterly?
I move to approve that we've modified, note that it's a quarterly report and approve it.
Second.
Pop and move in second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Is it okay if I write on this?
Also, just to make it formal, you do remove your original motion and I'll remove my second, so that way we now have the modified, because we actually had a motion.
Okay.
Okay, just want to have it on the record. Thank you. Okay, introduction of new employees and personnel changes. Is MJ here?
Yes.
And MJ, I am not even going to try, I butchered the last name.
You know what, me too. We're calling him TJ.
Let's see if we can do it correctly.
Tagruh Ahmedov.
Tagruh Ahmedov?
Yes.
Oh, right.
Awesome, we got it.
Tagruh, okay.
So TJ is going to be doing the four to 12 shift, and that for me is the hardest shift to find coverage for. He has a background in child development, so we're excited for him to start. Think he'll be great.
Move for approval?
Second.
Pop and move in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
TJ, congratulations. Welcome.
Welcome.
And thank you for helping us. Is there any other new employees? Seeing none, we now have comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Feel free, give your name, address, and you have four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Nichols. I live at 330 Dreamcatcher Circle. It addresses Morgantown, although it's located in Stewartstown.
Okay.
I have distributed to you the editorial from the Dominion Post of October 6th, and the title there was "Climate Change Has Come to Roost This Fall." Now, on the second page there, I'm not going to read the whole thing because obviously this is a competent organization, but the second paragraph on the second page, "We may be wasting our breath taking state and federal government people to ask them to do a study of the problem of global warming, particularly with regards to the killing of birds in this case. But in the spirit of the global climate strike," they're saying this, "We demand our leaders do more to combat these changes that are no longer just in the public consciousness but are in its backyard. My biggest concern is the public health." Now, I was here when the original Longview was commissioned. The original Longview promised they would use West Virginia coal, they would not take any water out of the Mon River, that the plant would be zero discharge, that they would bring their coal into the plant with conveyor belt, and that the cost would be approximately $870 million. On the basis of that, a pilot agreement was drawn up and they were given that concession. Obviously, the cost wasn't that, it was close to $2 billion. And did that original pilot agreement reflect that new cost there? I don't know the answer to that. They're not using West Virginia coal, I don't think they ever have. They have now given up the conveyor belt, doing 300 trucks per day over on the road over on Fort Martin. It's a terrible predicament if you lived over there. No river water? Yes, they are. They're taking water out of the Mon River up near Point Marion, and they're processing it, using it, and vaporizing it into the atmosphere. I lived downwind of the plant, so I am aware of these things. They said zero discharge, but guess what? They had discharge from the beginning, they just didn't admit it. They pump it into Pennsylvania down into a coal mine. Well, now, they're building a pipeline in West Virginia, and they're going to dump it into the Robinson Run and into the Mon River. So here we've got this whole series of conditions. They had good intentions, I suppose. I'm not doubting intentions. I'm doubting the reality of accepting a plan that has these serious flaws. But the final thing to tell you is, we are fantastically fortunate to live here with all of the health services we have. The West Virginia University Hospital System and all of the allied and associated activities. The Mon County Health System is incredible as well. But with these power plants around here, it's putting stuff into the air that is harmful. If you don't believe it's harmful, you can go to the university researchers. They have two or three different departments over there doing research and fine particulates. You may or may not have heard, a study has come out of Great Britain just yesterday indicating that the health hazard of breathing these particulates even from a gas-fired plant will set you back in your brain capacity by 10 years. 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a presentation from Melissa Wiles, Executive Director of Bow Park and Mills Group, and we'll come down there so we can watch it. Okay?
So, good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for allowing us to be here today. It is our pleasure to present a full synopsis and update on our ice arena improvement project. I'm Melissa Wiles, Executive Director of Bow Park, and I'm joined today by Mr. Ryan Hess, who is our primary point of contact from the Mills Group and the project lead for the Mills Group team. I'll be turning over the floor to Ryan very shortly, and he's going to take us on a detailed journey through this community project thus far. But just as some initial review for the audience and a quick history, Bow Park was part of the 2016 Park and Trail Levy, and from that successful campaign, our board chose a major project that focused on one of our premier facilities. Additions, renovations, and upgrades to the Morgantown Ice Arena. With the passage of that levy, we put together a plan of action, a timeline, and have included a great deal of due diligence on the part of everyone involved, as you'll see in Ryan's portion of the presentation. From my perspective as an administrator, this project has been rewarding, it's been enlightening, and complex. The facility itself is over 40 years old, the components inside the facility are also aged, and we have some unique challenges as well as some valuable opportunities. But without getting too far ahead of myself, because I want to really showcase what Ryan will be presenting, I'm going to turn the floor over to him in order for us to review those challenges and opportunities, and he's going to give us a synopsis of how the project has progressed to date. Ryan?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Matt. Good morning.
Before I start, is this set up on the screen?
Yeah, because I'll be able to film it.
For everybody to be able to see. So as Melissa stated, our team has been retained by Bow Park.
Our team has been retained by Bow Park to really help them not just work on architectural designs for an existing building or a new building, but also help them understand the feasibility of moving forward, help them understand their opportunities and constraints of their existing structure, and guide them in programming so that steps forward are in the right direction and well thought, and can help them be successful with a sustainable plan. Sustainability from a financial perspective, from a staffing perspective, and then from a materials perspective. So our team behind us is larger and more finite than Mills Group. We have consultants on our team. HF Lens, engineers out of Pittsburgh, who has worked on ice arenas, ice rinks, new and renovated, all over the western Pennsylvania, Ohio, greater New York area and region. Allegheny Design, Sports and Recreation specializes in sports and recreation components all over the country. Cheat Road Engineering, a local site civil engineer who has tremendous knowledge of the infrastructure of Morgantown, the surrounding areas. And we also retain a consultant, Furland Management, out of Maine and Nova Scotia, who all they do are help consult with arenas, not only from new building projects, but also with operations, financial projections, et cetera. Our scope of services that we were tasked with from Bow Park was to predominantly investigate the useful life remaining in the current ice rink slab, roof, and overall structure. So we waited until the ice melted and into the off-season, of course, to investigate the slab of the ice. Aside from a few nicks and dings and the datum point that was drilled at center ice during the original pour, our team believes that the slab is in good condition, stable condition, for a building that I should mention was constructed in 1978. There were some concerns throughout the community and from maintenance over the past few years that the glue lamb, the large beams that you see inside the arena could be compromised from being inside of a damp environment since 1978. We hired an outside wood science, non-destructive testing agency from upstate New York to come down and, again, test these beams in a non-destructive manner with chips and graphs and small drills. And what we found from that exercise was that every one of those nine glue lambs is in the same condition that it was in 1978, except for only one of them. Only one of them is directly underneath of an exhaust fan that leaks during rainstorms and snow, so it's retained some moisture, and our structural engineers have advised us to proceed knowing that that has a 10% reduction in the structure. So the challenge with this building is that, as it has been built over time, as it was originally an outdoor canopy, it was just a roof over an outdoor rink, it's been enclosed. The building's not adequately pressurized. The building leaks. The building leaks water and the building leaks air. So therefore, actually, a little blessing in disguise is that the building has breathed very well since 1978. So there's no rot, moisture damage inside the structure. There are some indications on the outside where snow and water and some shade has prevented sunlight from drying those materials out. But what we found was the building envelope, the shell of the building is compromised and is contributing to a high use of all the systems, the chiller, the HVAC system, the heaters, and technically, the air conditioning units that are in there serving as dehumidification. So that has really contributed to high operating costs from Bow Park. We were given stats and data that were done in previous studies prior to our team jumping on this project, which were done two years before us. So there was a capital improvement plan and comparative analysis, and I'll get to that in just a few minutes. And we were really hard up on not repeating any information that had already been done, but utilizing it to help our consultancy. We've been tasked with investigating, how can we expand the locker rooms, renovate the locker rooms, get more locker rooms? Same with restrooms. We've all known and heard from user groups that there aren't enough toilets and sinks for large capacity those Friday nights, Saturday nights. The fire marshal has posted this rink as a 400-capacity spectator arena, and we have been asked to look at ways to increase that so that the leagues can host tournaments. And then, of course, hosting tournaments creates a captive audience, so how can we increase the concessions and food and beverage services of this rink to, again, help with some revenues? Beyond that, this rink is staffed by Bow Park, so there are days, midweek, that only one staff individual is there in charge of running the Zamboni, renting skates, running operations and programs. So it's critical that the literal architecture and floor plan layout is conducive to one person being able to, kind of in a cockpit-like, being able to serve everything and answer the phone. But also, when large programs and events are going on, not hockey, not skating, but other events, that this building can increase in staff to facilitate this. As I previously mentioned, the mechanical equipment is outdated. For example, last year, Bow Park spent roughly $80,000 on repairs to the chiller, and so our team is really looking forward to ways of integrating new systems that reduce capital expenditures as they're projected out to years. The building suffers from not meeting code in ADA, American Disabilities Act, of points of entry, entering doors, exiting doors. The bathroom doors aren't wide enough. The entry door has a lip, is non-operable, as well as some other building code issues and factors such as egress. So, you know, we've been asked to increase the capacity from 400 to 800 to 1,000 individuals, and that's going to mean certainly a kind of a trickle-down of an egress path and exterior doors, et cetera. And then beyond that, as I mentioned, how can we, you know, think of materials that are sustainable of themselves? So our team immediately went to some priorities in the rink and looked at areas where we knew we could really help and make an impact immediately. Again, all of this was under the auspice of $2.5 million of funds that would come over a five-year period from the 2016 levy. So we were going to get little pieces at a time, it all wasn't going to come immediately. So I'll talk a little bit about that progress that's been made and how those monies have contributed. But everything from, you know, the Zamboni, which is off-gassing into the rink, you know, we need to make sure we have adequate exhaust inside the rink because ultimately that will contribute to poor ice quality, poor air quality, water quality, ice quality onto the playing surface. So the mission of the rink is to serve and host winter sports and winter recreation. This graph, this chart, is indicative of the data we received from previous capital improvement plans. The pie chart on the left shows expenses, the pie chart on the right shows revenues. So we quickly looked for the largest areas of their expenses. So 32% of the expenses are part-time salaries and benefits, then utilities, then capital expenditures. So we're aware that utilities roughly take up 30% of the capital expenses, so our strategy was, of course, to reduce those. As far as part-time salaries and benefits, we're, again, as this rink, we're looking to grow it or renovate it, we want to make sure that it can be staffed and shown an economic plan for that. And then the capital expenditures are really kind of the emergency funds, fixing what's broken on a year-to-year basis, but that has always been unexpected for about the past 10 to 15 years. On the revenue side, contrary to what we would have believed moving into this project, 43% of the revenue averages come from rentals and 33% come from public skate programs. So it's actually not the hockey leagues that are keeping this building financially feasible. It's the rental programs and the public skates. So how can we open up more opportunities for party rooms, rental rooms, public skates, off-hour events, and, again, year-round events? Remember, the ice is formed in early August, so WVU Hockey and Morgantown Hockey can get a jumpstart to the leagues, and then it's melted mid to late March. So we have a gap that Bow Park programs and staffs during those off-seasons, but we certainly have some opportunities to increase revenues there. Before we even started with architecture, before we even put pen to paper, we interviewed and had a series of meetings of stakeholders. So Bow Park and the city of Morgantown are very large stakeholders. The city of Morgantown owns the lot and the building. Bow Park is the building operator. So we really needed to listen before we even started doing our work. Bow Park has data of their utility usage, of their rentals, they've helped equip us with the knowledge that we've needed to move forward. Beyond that, the leagues and the user groups. So these user groups are the paying customers essentially to this building, which include West Virginia University Hockey, has two teams, it's a club team, the Morgantown Blades, which is under the Morgantown Hockey Association, and the high school programs, the Mason Dixon Figure Skating Club, and again, Bow Park. Some absolutes that we learned from those discussions were, however this project moves forward, whether it's a renovation or a new building or a building in a different location, this area must not lose a season of hockey. Being told that it would be detrimental to the growth. We were on an upward growth of youth leagues and high school leagues, and that those kids would either quit or go play somewhere else. So we can't lose a season. So that in itself helps strategize the architectural and engineering design team to be able to have something that can be worked around the existing building or be built in pieces and in a phased schedule during a construction season. We've been asked to have ice 12 months a year. Again, one of the reasons why that's not possible or obtainable right now is, A, it's the interest in the leagues, you know, Bow Park is busy supporting its other programs at that time, but at the same time, with the building not being adequately pressurized or insulated and leaking air and water, it becomes incredibly difficult for the chiller system and the dehumidification system to make dry ice in the summer months. August and September are really difficult on the building, still fighting some humidity in this area, and it's really taxing these systems. For example, a chiller, we're supposed to get about 30 years out of a chiller, and we're at kind of year 15 now, and it's really chugging along. We're overusing some of the systems. Four locker rooms exist in the building today. Two of them have restrooms and two of them do not. So in a given weekend or tournament day, two teams are in locker rooms, and then the next two teams are entering the building at the same time during the existing game, and they have to make quick changeovers. And we've learned that that's inadequate for really defragmenting a schedule and always having that ice time rented. In addition to that, those locker rooms also serve as the party rooms. So when a team's in there, there can't be a pizza party in there, there can't be another rental. So we're looking to get more rooms, and then, of course, the spectator capacity. The building is limiting West Virginia University Hockey from growing, it's limiting Morgantown Blades and the Mason Dixon Figure Skating Club from growing because of their capacity. Of course, an increased capacity can increase some revenue for the teams, the leagues, and the financial structure of this, but also, when they look to host regional or national tournaments, there are some criteria that must exist to be a host and a home team. So some of those criterias, for example, are 800 spectators or 1,000 spectators. And then, of course, an expanded food and beverage service. You know, what we've learned is the kids are playing hockey, and the kids are skating, and the kids are renting, but it's actually their parents that are the paying customers. Their parents are the ones waiting, you know, in the lobby and in the warming area. So there is a demand for expanded food and beverage service, whether it's a concessions or even a restaurant area, as what's seen in several peer institutions around the western Pennsylvania area. So kind of hitting it right away, our executive summary, after we've designed this rink, we'll show in a little bit, and after we have gone through our analysis, we also hired a Furland Management to do a feasibility study and business plan. So we have the ideas here, and we wanted to know how can these ideas work? Or do these ideas support the actual costs of using the building, the actual operations cost, the actual revenues that are coming? And we found that they did. And six key points here are, once schedule was looked at and once growth and trends were looked at, it was a fact that there's insufficient ice time for youth hockey program expansion. We found that there's inadequate locker room, lobby, and meeting space. Again, we have some drastic dehumidification issues, plumbing, water, and sewage issues exist, and those really came to a head this summer, which have been repaired since. The inadequate bleacher seating, food and beverage service, vending being the only option. And then beyond that, when 400 to 500 people are crammed in the warming hut that was built in 1978, it prevents new teams from walking in the front door with bags and sticks and walking back to the locker room. So it's a real bottleneck at the front doors of the building, so we look to relieve that. In our study of existing blueprints and existing drawings of the building and initial visits, we uncovered this rendering that's framed in the admin offices there, and it's a reminder of the original intent of the building and the structure, to be a seasonal skating area that's now been enclosed, that's now been, you know, the house of high-level hockey, skating, and other programs. So we talked about the non-destructive testing, talked about the business plan. Beyond hockey and skating, we know this is a community event. There are basketball in the summer, there are inline hockey in the summer, other programs, and this building also sits in the middle of White Park. So from a master plan and a strategic placement, this building is with walking distance to water, to trails, running, biking, to baseball, softball fields, to youth leagues, and to other city of Morgantown components. So this is beyond just an ice arena, this is beyond hockey. Since we started this project back late 2016, early 2017, a few upgrades have been made to the facility. For example, this summer, a new sanitary line was, a sanitary line was replaced and now serving the building. The infrastructure for the building is aging and has collapsed and broken and has prevented adequate water supply, and of course, taking the sanitary waste away from the building. So that was removed and replaced. And with that came new toilet facilities. from the building. So that was removed and replaced. And with that came new toilet facilities, which expanded an opportunity for locker rooms and extra changing area to kind of help the flow of the front lobby from serving that need. There were some phantom light fixtures and wires inside the building. For example, there's a whole set of lighting fixtures that used to illuminate the playing surface that don't anymore. New lights now illuminate the playing surface. So those have since been removed, thus eliminating opportunity for pucks and other basketballs from hitting during the playing time, and has also cleaned up the space. Moving forward, as we continue to get through the original $2.5 million levy, the next steps truly are to address the architectural needs, the building envelope, the roof, the water infiltration. And as we learned, you know, this building is meant to serve as a refrigerator, but it is highly under insulated. For example, this ice arena doesn't have insulation that would need to meet a single-family private residence building code. So we're inadequate there. And before any chiller HVAC, heating, cooling replacement should be, could be looked at, the building envelope needs addressed. Knowing that, as we've been tasked with, the actual verbiage in the levy was renovations, improvements, and upgrades to the existing facility. So that being said, we wanted to acknowledge this existing facility, but also look at how could we grow this existing facility? A floor plan and a quick three-dimensional graphic here shows that there's room on the backside of the building. We have the two existing locker rooms and a coaches' room. And then WVU Hockey had built a locker room here. We have more space on the backside of the building for expansion. We have more space on the south end for expansion. And you can see our front building here is undersized for accomplishing all of those areas. But we truly needed to address this building by not overlooking the fact that we can't lose a season of hockey. So as this project moves forward, it must move forward in a linear, phased approach and phased area. So we found opportunities to really fill in the missing teeth around the back and around the front of the building. We're severely constrained on-site by property and topography. Mississippi Street runs along the front of the building. Coben Creek is behind the building, which serves as the Zamboni Ice Dump. So there's some advantages of the building being where it is. So we wanted to take those advantages. So we're creating something out of those constraints to increase the opportunities of the area. So a quick reference, the blue represents new programming, and the gold represents renovations to the space. So as you can see on level one, on the base level here, new storage, a new locker room, a new coaches' room, a new weight room, and another new storage on that back end. Accompany renovations of locker rooms and space that already exist. We're constrained from a width standpoint on the building. And, you know, we've heard that the spectator experience is poor, largely because of the glue lamps, the structures that are in there. So there's a little bit of room and opportunity to add some bleacher seating in between those. They do inhibit some sightlines from a north-south standpoint. So we have opportunity to grow the building structurally predominantly on either end of the ice, to add that 800 to 1,000-person seating, plus in addition to the standing room that exists now. West Virginia University, a tenant here, has opportunity of two new locker rooms for each of their teams. And again, a weight room on the project here. Really, this is a two-story design. The rink maintains its one-level vaulted ceiling area where the two stories are at either end. So right above the West Virginia University locker rooms are party room and party room for those leasing and rental opportunities, as well as a press box, so that it can clean up and open up the player surfaces where the coaches' room, the officials' room are right next to each other. Michael just walked in here. And a day after our contract was signed to jump on the team, we got an email by an individual in the community who is an official. And two to three officials run each game, and their officiating dressing room is currently right beside the coaches' room. So after a game of heavy dispute, the official walked back to change his clothes and just got barraged from the angry coach of the losing team. So there's some little intricacies like that that we've built in. As you can see, the officials' room is located on the opposite side of the ice with a quick exit out the building at the end of the game. We found that the existing warming room is, again, undersized. So we have expanded all of that, keeping the front door on Mississippi Street, and the expansion of a studio ice sheet. We've investigated adding a full sheet, a full second sheet of ice, but we're constrained on-site, and it doesn't allow it. So the more building gets designed, the less parking is available. We also learned from that feasibility study and business plan that the studio rink would help alleviate scheduling for young skaters, learn-to-skate hockey, could also serve older hockey programs such as goalie practice, skills practice, could also serve as kind of its own studio arena for figure skating shows, et cetera. So to be a true complement to this ice. So that meant, efficiency-wise, we wanted to locate the Zamboni, the chiller, the HVAC, the boiler, somewhat centralized between two sheets of ice, so that one Zamboni could run each area. With an expanded entry level and an admin being up front that could serve that skate rental, the office space, serve as the pro shop, as again, kind of from that staffing perspective, we have new expanded restrooms. Above these restrooms and on this second level would be a restaurant space. And it's space that's planned for now, whether it's a restaurant as a tenant. If it's not a restaurant, it's another party room. But predominantly, it's expanded visibility of the ice surface. So it's spectator area. So this idea has a small concessions-serving kind of vending area down below at the main playing level surface, but a full-service restaurant up above. And that's a lot of the feedback we got from the local ice hockey leagues, West Virginia University Hockey, figure skating leagues, who play in arenas in Ohio, Pennsylvania, Indiana, and New York. And there's that restaurant component overlooking them. It's a very popular aspect of it. So the building, of course, had to be staggered a little bit on this end because the topography in the hillside, Coben Creek runs right behind it here. So serving needs of storage, we've got six locker rooms in there, we've got officials, a new chiller room. So right now, the chiller in the building is, as again, aging and taxed, and its waste heat is running up into the air. And this idea has the chiller, us capturing the waste heat from the chiller and distributing it throughout the building. So a quick axonometric of the structure, as you can see, it became a lot tighter back here, and an expanded front area with large operable, large glass, so that the individuals in the warming room can still see the playing surface, and overlook of the restaurant space down to the ice. And there's a similar component down here, and expanded spectator areas on either side. So with the need and the ask of increasing spectators and individuals coming to and from the site, certainly the parking in the site has to expand. However, with a constrained site, our opportunities were limited. As you can see, a creek running right behind the building, large steep grade here. The existing parking lot, we have found opportunity of expanding that parking lot, adding an additional row of parking, such that could accommodate things like the charter buses for the away teams, and the buses that come in to bring their school students for programs. We can expand this parking lot slightly down to the edge of the woodline. The studio rink is really between the existing rink and the new rink. So the parking is still inadequate. This plan shows jumping across Mississippi Street right behind the existing softball field for an expansion of parking, which really becomes the parking lot across the street from the front door of the new building. So as you can see, the light-shaded region is the existing footprint of the building. And this plan was adopted, you know, it must be said that we created three concepts, worked with Bow Park, and ultimately selected this one because it could be a phased plan over time. With upgrades now, as we mentioned, to the envelope, this playing surface and this glue lamp structure would stay the same, so that hockey could continue to be played and not miss a season. And these pieces and components of the building could be added to later over time, as they could be structurally independent of this area. And for the street crossing, we've planned for a raised traffic table here. So I'm going to show a quick video that really helps pull all this together and understand the rendering components So our team was hired to take the project through the feasibility study, the feasibility analysis, what can and can't be done, develop concepts that could then be adopted, develop concepts that could then create the plan, the phasing study, the phasing concept to move forward, to make the project a reality. So we're at the end of our conceptual design phase, and providing updates to the commission, the stakeholder groups, et cetera. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update today for you guys. We are working with Bow Park to move these plans forward. We've been asked to pull together, our team again, to take the design to the next level. So thank you for the opportunity again to...
Do you have some last questions?
Yeah.
Melissa, are you going to add any more?
Yes, sir. I think that's some of that point.
Yes, very good. Sean, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So this is, of the existing 2.5 that will be collected over the five years, obviously, that's not covering all this. What's the overall plan for making this happen?
My question.
Well, obviously, yes, that is not going to cover the entire project. We are involved with our Parks and Trail Levy Group for the renewal of the levy in 2020, which we're hoping will contribute to the remainder of this project. We hope to do some bonding with at least a portion of the sales tax received from the City of Morgantown by Bow Park, looking at grant funding, looking at stakeholder partnerships with locker rooms and things of that nature. You know, we provide the space, the stakeholders maybe do the build-out to those locker rooms. Public and private rental revenue, as Ryan mentioned, the possibility of the restaurant area, so possibly some rental components there and some revenue from that to offset costs. And hopefully, private and corporate donations, which we are also looking at.
Okay. So you touched on my second question, and that would be, I noticed the renovations you're doing for West Virginia University. Are there been talks with them in regards to participating in this?
Correct.
That's part of your stakeholder engagement?
Correct, yes.
Across the street where you're putting the parking lot, that's going to be below the basketball court, so it won't take the courts away. I think I still saw them. And it won't affect the Libertor Field?
Correct.
Time parameters?
One of the early thoughts I'd heard that you were going to take Libertor or Pamberry for parking. And I know that a lot of softball people are quite upset about that. But now, the parking lot, you're not going to expand it over the hill, you're just expanding it down.
Correct. And another row of parking, not down the hill, but there's some flat area, topographically flat area to produce that second row where I mentioned those buses could park.
Okay. So the entrance will be kind of, I noticed, and again, as you're showing me this, I'm asking all these questions, but the final drawing, so the building right up against the road, and the entrance will just be brought down. And then I have a question about whether the studio rink would be under the roof, but obviously, you've answered my question.
Yeah, the entrance can be moved down that pedestrian crosswalk that would bridge the new parking lot over by the softball fields to the front of the building. That's almost aligned directly to the front, the new front door of the building, which sits between the two rings. So there's going to be a new entrance off of Mississippi. And we've been working with our engineers and the City of Morgantown, the City of Morgantown's engineering, to develop a drop-off area, so that you can relieve congestion. And predominantly, these events take place in evenings in the wintertime, when it's dark. That safety of those children with bags and all those distractions was one of the early concepts that we explored, so that we could make sure that it fit into this project.
And you referred to that crosswalk, you had a term, I didn't catch what you'd said, but it's something, you called it a raised area?
Yeah, it's like an elevated speed table. So it's about the same height as a speed bump.
Okay.
But it's tabletop, and it's large, blatantly marked, kind of like a New York City crosswalk.
Okay.
Which would also serve, some of our feedback with Morgantown Engineering, is traffic calming along Mississippi, which is a very long straight road that vehicles have an argument.
Which you just recently, they added, they've just added speed homes, haven't they?
To pick up speed, yes.
So is the funding's available, time parameters?
Well, we are moving into, as Ryan said, negotiations on architectural design. That will likely take at least six months. So that's quite a long process. And then dependent upon the bonding parameters with the sales tax, that's going to determine as well how quickly we can move forward. With everything else coming in in increments, you know, it is going to, it's still going to be a phased, a phased project.
Anytime estimate?
Um, so six months?
If you could wave your magic wand and everything lined up.
Right. I would say we would be...
Funding's available, how long?
Funding's available. We would be getting into construction, I would say probably 2000, spring of 2020? 21?
21.
21, yeah.
You know, from the construction side of things, we have to have that tough discussion because, you know, ideally, the construction starts, we end the season a little bit early. So instead of keeping ice till the end of March, it comes back and cuts off early March. And short construction window of March through hopefully September to get that in. So, you know, if we can mobilize or build footers for, you know, those other components in the fall, kind of phase a, either fast-track construction schedule or a double mobilization to accomplish this. So that's a fair estimate.
Yeah, and that's why I don't, you know, 2021, yes, you know, our, so our, the architectural plans coming in within six months, that's not to say that we won't do some things in the off-season this coming year. So I'm not trying to be, not, this is a cut-and-dry date about it, but really, we can't give a cut-and-dry date because there may be some things that we can accomplish in this off-season, certainly.
No, and it's perfectly understandable that the nature of this project, the nature that it is being used, has the same time you're trying to expand...
Right, it's a bit complicated.
At the same time, you're trying to figure out the funding, you know, exponentially increases the difficulty. So it sounds like you guys have covered everything. So just to confirm, you said that you had an informed of the beams. Those are all fine, and there's nothing, there are no, structurally, there's nothing wrong with them? there's nothing wrong with them?
They're not. They've been protected, they've been dry. One of them had a leak, which was directly under an exhaust fan. It wasn't even above it, but they're dry, still has the original paint on it.
That's good news.
Yeah, very good news.
Couple of questions. One, the facility looks amazing. I'm a little confused. Is it going to be under ice for 12 months? Or are you going to do the same thing as you've done before, where you stop it and then use it for basketball? That's a question that hasn't been cleared up.
Right. Well, according to the business plan model, we could possibly support, likely support, ice on at least one slab year round.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll be providing both.
Right.
And this gives the operator an opportunity to have two ice, one ice, and leave the other, whether it's the studio or the full-size slab, for basketball, for other indoor events and opportunities.
Okay. Now, the big question, which we're going to have to ask, which is, what is the overall cost of the project? And how do you see it being funded? Because I know you've talked in general, but we need to know generally, well, the public would like to know. What are we talking about in a cost? And how much per year? And how is some of that generally? Because, you know, you haven't worked that out yet. But what is the overall cost of this facility right now?
Great question. These are early plans.
Yeah, preliminary costs, because we understand.
Yeah. Our team is estimating a 13 to $16 million project here, depending on some of these factors. The project has not been drilled yet or sampled. So still several unknowns. And then even more unknowns with an existing building. That's about the target range. And that would, you know, be inclusive of what you've seen today.
And how do you plan? Do you have some general ideas? I mean, you gave general, but that's, we're talking 13 to 16 million. We're not talking 1 million.
Right, correct.
So what are we looking at? How are we looking to fund this?
Well, with renewal of the levy, we would have a total of probably 5 million because 2.5 current, 2.5 again, looking at that renewal. We have been told preliminarily that we could possibly fund up to 15 million bonding with the sales tax. We do not want to utilize all of our sales tax revenue for this particular project because we have several other projects that we are probably going to also try and bond. Those are preliminary numbers. And then, of course, all of the other things I mentioned on top of that, it just depends. Looking at a land and water grant for the next rotation, that could be up to $250,000 if we're successful. And again, donors and things of that nature.
With one clarification, my last question. Because in the new budget, it's been proposed, in the second year of your budget, it was announced that you were getting 1.2 million for Bow Park. My question is, is that for this? Or is it for all the facilities? Or is this 1.2 for something else? And then you're going to get more money from the sales tax?
No, that is for Bow Park. That is for the sales tax. That's the...
But we'll go to this project? Or we'll go, because a lot of...
Operations.
Or operations. Because a lot of the concerns were facilities and other programs. And I think it would be helpful to clarify, or maybe you don't have that answer yet, but that might be helpful to clarify.
No, I think that's what I was explaining with regard to bonding.
You know, okay.
That if we get that amount, we can bond a portion of it for this project. We don't want to bond all of it.
Okay.
Because we do have all those other issues and needs.
With the guaranteed revenue stream, they could get the project bonded without the dollars at one point.
Right.
Whatever.
And that's what I'm looking at.
They don't have to put that to the project, just the fact they've got the revenue stream coming in.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay, good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
This is exciting.
Thanks, Mike.
Excellent presentation.
Yes. Okay. I'm expecting the same presentation from Becca Flynn. With WVU Extension Agent, 4H Youth Development, 2019 National 4H Week. So do you have your multimillion-dollar...
My present...
You do have something coming up and moving in. So you might want to mention that, too.
We do. We're very excited about that. Yes, I was looking at those plans and thinking about how far our building has come, you know, as we're preparing to move to Mylan Park. So we will have a new 4H Center, as I affectionately call it. And we're very excited about that, and of course, your support. So as you said, my name is Becca Flint Clark. I am the 4H Extension Agent. I will have served in February 12 years in this position. And I always say, my dream job, you know, and I couldn't imagine being in a better place. So I did provide you with a 4H report. It's not National 4H Week. We actually missed it. It was last week. I was goofy and ended up booking programs in our schools. So I guess I was sort of doing the 4H work during National 4H Week. So we are a week late, but we did have a, we do have a successful past year in 4H. We do have 6,033 youth who were served in Montague County through the 4H program. That's through community clubs, school enrichment programs, our Energy Express Summer Program, and 4H Camp. So it did go down a little, I will say, from the past year, but that's only because of the way that we report. They had found that there was some double dipping statewide. So we are reporting a little differently. But I am very competitive. I don't know if you know that about me. So I always like to have the largest youth served in the state. And we do have that. By far, we reach the most youth in the state. I remember when I first started, Commissioner Asil Kennedy, I used to give a report that had each county and how many youth served were on it. And so we were second one year, and he said, he looked at the state, and he said, now, this county in the eastern panhandle has more, but I know for a fact that there's not that many kids in that county. So we need to figure that out. So I went back, and I said, something doesn't seem quite right with this report. And soon after, we got a new report. And of course, Montague County had the most youth served. So we do work very hard to make sure that 4H are involved in, youth in the county are involved in some type of 4H program. 4H is thriving. We continue to add 4H community clubs. We are starting a horse club at our new facility in November, so that's very exciting. We have a couple of new community clubs that are starting, as well as an archery club that started last year, that meets at Camp Muffley, actually. Camp was very successful. We had 324 youth at 4H Camp. We do have two residential 4H camps, and then one-day camp for our younger kids to get used to coming to camp for a week. It's always, you know, the highlight of a lot of people's summer and a lot of people's year. And so it's going strong. Our camping program's great. We're very fortunate to be able to utilize Camp Muffley. So we appreciate your support in that. It's a beautiful facility. Sometimes the kids complain about the beds, and I think, you have no idea. I grew up in Preston County 4H. Our camp is way nicer than what I had. We, what else would you like to know about? Oh, next week, we will be going to Suncrest Middle with our National Youth Science Day experiment. So I'll be taking two young men who were recognized on the national level, Connor Brown, Duncan Wilson, two 4Hers, to go and help me teach sixth and seventh graders about coding. And I'm very thankful they're going with me because it's sort of over my head. But I think that they'll be great ambassadors of 4H and will be able to teach youth a new subject. I think they'll really enjoy it. So, you know, things are going great. Things are really, it's really been great. We're, like I said, super excited about that new facility. Appreciate all your support. I consider our county very fortunate, our 4H program very fortunate to have county commissioners that do appreciate youth development like you do, do understand the 4H program and what it does for our young people. So I thank you very much for that. And I can entertain any questions if you'd like. I do have one more story to tell you before I'm finished.
No, I'm good. I don't have any questions. It is the highlight of my daughter's summer to go to your camp. Kind of a highlight of my summer, too. Send them to your camp. They love it, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
I have to say that actually, it's still the highlight of my summer to work the camp. I've been working camps now, I believe, 30 years. And each year brings a new renewal of what I see in the youth of our county.
And you have one more story?
So today is Bosses' Day, so happy Bosses' Day to you. So I have a first grader, and so every time she sees Ed, she loves Ed. They have a great friendship. And so she knows him as one of my bosses because I do consider County Commission someone who kind of guides our programming. I come and report to you, and you make sure that we do what we need to be doing. So recently, I told her about Commissioner Bloom with the big drum. She loves him and jumps up and down when she sees him in the parade. And she, who is that? Well, that's another one of my bosses. So then, we were, oh, so I do have bosses through WVU, actual people that I report to. So we have an associate director, Jennifer Williams, who I report to, and then Sude Perutz, who's our interim director. So again, I told Rory, you know, you be nice to the bosses. We've got to be good to the bosses. So then finally, we were somewhere, I can't remember where, and we ran into Dr. Eddie Campbell, who, again, I consider Board of Education, a guiding group of our programming. And Rory said, who's that? Well, he's in charge of the schools, and he helps me get into the schools. He's one of the bosses. Finally, she realizes, and she says, mommy, how many bosses do you have? So happy Bosses' Day to you. Again, I certainly appreciate all that you do for 4H and am always at your service. So if you ever think of anything that we need to do, if there's a need in the community, you can send people my way or contact me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Sheriff Perry Palmer, or Associate, thrilled to get the presentation of the suspension list for the 2018 taxed year.
The sheriff apologizes, but he did have to.
Yes.
He had another meeting, so...
Thank you.
This list creased than the last report.
Yes, thank you. Do we have to accept the report, or just...
You can accept it. It doesn't need approval. So before you is a list of properties that will be suspended from the 2018 tax lien sale. And they are being suspended for various reasons. Bankruptcy, previously certified to the auditor, condemnation, interest in minerals only. And we have one questionable deed. So for a total of 845 properties that will be suspended from the sale. They will be collected eventually, but we will not sell a lien against them on November the 4th.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Move for approval.
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And just like Becca, today's my anniversary. I will, I start my 12th year here at the county.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I know you're all waiting for the end of this, so we'll move quickly. We don't have that much more. Colleen Coon Grant?
Good morning. I think it's morning. I have requests for reimbursement. The first one is JJDP. It's Voices 2 program in the amount of $1,492.03. And the Governor's Highway Safety Program impaired driving in the amount of $3,721.56. And another Governor's Highway Safety Program, this one is Save Communities in the amount of $488.01. Then I also have a grant application that will need approved.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the grant application is for the Records Management and Preservation Board grant. The county clerk is requesting $45,000 to purchase archival quality boxes to store their documents that they're going through and trying to make sure they're going to be a better quality. We have a resolution of support. Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
Okay.
Since we put in the record.
Whereas the County Commission of Montague County believes in the promotion of the principles of efficient records management and preservation, and whereas the Records Management and Preservation Group awards grants to county commissions to assist office holders in the management and preservation of county records, and whereas the County of Montague is submitting one application for funding through the West Virginia Division of Culture and History, and whereas the Records Management and Preservation Board's grant program requires that the County Commission enter into a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Division of Culture and History to receive and administer grant funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Montague County Commission hereby fully supports the project submitted by the Montague County Clerk and will comply with all grant reporting deadlines, budget purchasing, and reporting requirements as indicated in the grant agreement.
Move approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Do we have any correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving forward, basically, now, we're going to go through a number of approval requisitions. To consider for approval requisitions, 25 and 26 for the University Town Center EODDD, Special District Excise Tax Revenue Refund and Improvement Bond Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
Okay. Number 25 is for $6,270. And those funds will be payable to Steptoe &amp; Johnson. Number 26 is for $8,000. And those are trustee fees that will be paid to West Banka because they are the trustee for those accounts.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval requisition number 20 for the Morgantown Industrial Park Series 2017 A Project Fund.
The requisition is for $60,000. And those funds will be paid to... $40,000 to Adrian Enterprises for project management, and $20,000 to Thrasher Engineering.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval requisition number one for the Morgantown Industrial Park Phase II Project Administrative Expense Fund.
The amount is $756.25. Those funds will be paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consider for approval requisition number nine for the Star City Project Number One Series 2012 TIF Administrative Expense Fund.
That requisition is for $1,055.60. And again, those funds will be paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval requisition number four for Development District Number Three Maple Drive Improvement Project Administrative Expense Fund.
The total request is for $6,387.50. And again, those were paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider for approval requisition number six for the University Town Center Series 2016 TIF Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $5,658.50. And those will be paid to Steptoe &amp; Johnson.
Move for approval?
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of requisition number 33 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
And this, sorry, Sean. This requisition is for $469,332.52.
Yes, and I do have a question on this. It's our agenda listed as requisition 33, but it's stated as requisition 34. Is that correct?
That's my, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So approval of requisition 34?
Yes.
Second.
Profit moving second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finally, to consider request by Mon County 4H and Awaken the Dawn for use of the Courthouse Square.
We have an application in hand, the 4H is hosting a holiday caroling and hot chocolate before the Christmas parade on December the 9th from 5:00 to 7:00. The other application is for a group called Awaken the Dawn. They will be doing something called Tent America 2019 on October the 18th and 19th, from 11:00 a.m. on the 18th to 11:00 p.m. on the 19th. So it'll be like a 36-hour event.
They're not going to put anything in the cement, are they? We've got to make--
How would they do that?
I don't know. This is a tent.
No, I, no.
They're not allowed to stay.
Okay, they're not, yeah, that's all, okay, do I have a motion to accept?
Move for approval with discussion?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Becca, is she still here?
Nope, she left.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the one I think Barbara asked about, asked about last week, don't they do that in conjunction with Main Street Morgantown?
I believe so.
So it's really a process question, they usually do this in conjunction with Main Street Morgantown, and I just wanted to confirm with her that that's what they were doing.
Okay, I mean, we can confirm.
Because they do the tree lighting, and then they do the hot chocolate.
Right.
And again, that's what Barbara said that they were looking to do.
Did you know anything about that?
Yeah.
Colleen takes care of the application, so.
I believe Becca's working with Barbara.
Okay, so when you tell her that it's going to prove, just note that--
Yeah.
Make sure she coordinates with Main Street Morgantown.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Because that is the parade, and that's when they'll light the trees, so.
Any other new business?
No, sir.
Great, okay, moving quickly, reports from elected officials? See ya, Nun, Ed, reports from county commissioners.
Last Thursday, I met Mr. Doyle, that was at Camp Muffley, for consideration of some new constructions. Then the evening, I did represent Commission at Core for the Conservation Awards Ceremony. Friday was our Board of Assessment and Appeals. And Monday evening, I attended the Met Theater Commission Meeting. Yesterday was, of course, our weekly meeting on the 4H and Extension Center, which was mentioned. And tomorrow, we have a landmark commission meeting. Friday, then, we'll be back to Myland Park for the walkthrough of the 4H and Extension Center. I have one other issue, last week, the governor came to town, and the governor chose to come to Montague County to have a town hall. I will state that I received no invitation, nor did any other commissioner that sits here. It's kind of disappointing that we weren't given some invitation, but more disappointing to the fact that the governor chose then to go and drive the roads of Preston County and report that squeaky wheels get the grease. We've been trying to cooperate for five years. And at the end of five years, I find that cooperation has resulted in no more cooperation at state level than lip service. Finally, I think that the commission is not going to do anything that would be against the state, but I'm asking the governor, if you want to come and meet with us, please come up here, and I'll drive you on a road. I won't have to go far to lift your head to the cab, I don't drive a school bus, but I don't have to go far to lift your head to the cab of my truck on the roads that are here in Montague County, and they lead to Preston County. So that being said, I'd also like some information that we've been requesting from the DOH. Why is it that we are being denied information on a running total of what's being done? And yet, no information comes forth. Your ballgame, Sean.
Since the last meeting, last Thursday, we had our red team meeting, Development Authority meeting, and then I had the Mason Dixon Historical Park meeting that night. On Friday, we had, Friday's an interesting day for me, had BOAA hearings and then an extension building walkthrough. Monday, of course, was Columbus Day, Tuesday, I had a breakfast with the school Board of Education President and Joe Statler, and then we had our extension building meeting. Today, we have regular business, I have a MAP meeting at the end of the day. Tomorrow, I have Myland Park Board meeting. At night, I have the MMPO meeting, I suspect that you two will be there.
Yes, yeah, sorry, I missed that.
I have family obligation with the homecoming parade with both my daughters being on it, so I'm going to see if I can kind of make both. Friday's the extension building walkthrough, and then next Monday, we also have the extension building walkthrough. I would like to express my sincere sympathy to the parents of Riley Burnett, a Clay Biddell student, who passed away last week. Both Tim and Deanna are friends of mine, I've known them since I've come to Morgantown, and I can't imagine what it'd be like to have to bury their child. So I express my sincere sympathy, and there's really nothing else I can say, so I'll leave it at that.
It's a tragic situation. I did attend this morning, the Morgan, the Main Street Board of Directors meeting. I made a promise to Chief Prest, that he had asked me to attend, and I did attend that. This Saturday, Mason Dixon Park, we are giving another food giveaway, and I will just keep my comments quiet. I strongly agree emphatically with Commissioner Hawkins' comments. And as I stated, this is what we've collected so far of reports of the roads, and we keep sending them letters, we sent a letter last Wednesday for this information. We will continue doing this, and I'm glad to hear that, you know, all three of us are basically on board. We want to sit down and come up with solutions and a plan for the future. And with that, I will end.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We be gone, thank you.